Ms. Thompson, if you wouldn't mind turn on the mic, turn on the mic, please.
There we go.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to also reiterate about a video that I took. I happened to be taking the excursion, the rail explorers excursion on Sunday. And so I had seen my son's videos that he reenacted. So when I'm coming from the river back toward town, I decided to video what I could see from the front rail, front of the rail car. And there is a bank that could be cut out if they continue on, that would really help the vision there because the rail cars are very low. And I could not see the driveway until I got right up on it. So I think maybe you have a copy of that, too.
Yes.
But I just want to reiterate that it's a, it's a danger. And I stand with my friends who have to endure the noise. If, you know, if it's not eliminated, perhaps it could be a limited number of runnings or something, so that especially not late at night. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. And your video was also shared in the OneDrive with the court. Other members of the public wishing to seek to address the court?
My other concern about Dale Dragomir, my other concern about safety is, is who has to ride away at these roads and at these crossings? It's my understanding that the train always has to ride away, but anything that isn't a train has to stop when it comes to whether there's a driveway or roadway. And is that correct? And is that, and is that, on my understanding, that's, at some places is not being enforced. And that's, that's a concern that we have because a good lawyer will find whoever he can sue, and we don't need that. As a county, we don't need that.
Yes, sir. Other folks wishing to address the public? Yes, sir.
My name is Jonathan Pierce. I live on Tyrone Pike as well. It's, it's really a big privacy concern for us. I mean, my back door's maybe 25 foot from the railroad track. And people are videoing, I mean, they're, they're having the best time. They're videoing, they're, they're, you know, videoing me doing whatever I'm doing in the yard or on the porch or whatever. It's, 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 it's a, it's a big privacy concern for us mostly.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Other folks wishing to address the court? We are coming on the fiscal court meeting in town at 5:30. Mr. Thompson?
I'll say one thing real quick. I'm Ed Thompson. We've lived on Tyrone Pike for about 25 years. The train is not that much of a nuisance. These rail cars, when they talk about the noise, the only thing I'd like to point out is if they're only using 10 cars at a time, that means it's 80 times that you hear these cars clanking up and down the rail rails each day. Now, I live probably 150, maybe 175 feet from the track itself. The train, we can hear it inside the house. We don't hear the rail car, these rail excursion cars inside the house. But when we're on our back patio, we can enjoy that 80 times a day. And just imagine, once or twice, you know, I can understand people passing that off, but 80 times a day, that gets a little troublesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Last call for anybody to address the court. Again, you're welcome to also email, write letters, communicate with us in other ways as well. Again, all of the information being shared is putting into a OneDrive folder that all magistrates have access to at all times. We welcome anybody for final comment before we move on with our business. Anybody else additional, would like to speak? Floor is open. Going once?
As I mentioned, Mr. Cummins, we're going to go into executive session to discuss
the legal issues related to this. Yes, sir. We're already well past our 5 o'clock deadline for that discussion, but I think we're going to have to take it up in fiscal court.
Judge, can I ask you something?
It's not appropriate for the court to ask questions at this point in time, but we have our regular meeting in the long run. This is the opportunity for the public to ask any, any, address any questions.
Are we going to find out the outcome of your discussion after the meeting?
Just wait till our meeting starts. Our next meeting. Just stay there for a minute.
Can we sit in on the next meeting?
Absolutely. So, so our next meeting is the regular meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court at 5:30. It's 5:33, so we haven't got that started yet. Our goal was to go into executive session to discuss possible potential litigation. That executive session would be closed to the public due to that exception. So you would not be able to sit in on that discussion. And there is not any agenda item as for the public discussion of this issue, but it may come from the executive session. That's all I can tell you without having the meeting. You're welcome. Would anybody else like to make a public comment before we close? Public comment? Going once?
Yeah, actually.
Yes, sir.
So you, you mentioned that you're going to have an executive session to discuss the legal issue.
Yes, sir.
But I think it would help a lot of us if, if we could hear some opinions or discussion about your thoughts on the impact to our, our privacy and, and to our lives rather than just shutting the door and kicking us out. Thank you.
Mr. County Attorney?
Well, if I understood that correctly, you're asking more about how are they going to address the noise, the litter and all those issues? Is that what, I'm not?
That's right. Yeah, we'd like, we'd like to hear the court's opinion on, on the impact to our lives outside of the fact that the museum is violating the terms of the law.
Well, again, not to violate, this is part of the public comment portion. I can't speak for the individual magistrates in that regard. I assume they are all sensitive to that and want to come up with whatever solution they can to address that, but I, I can't really speak on their individual behalf in that regard. But...
Yeah, I guess we'd like to hear anybody if they have input on our situation, if they'd like to speak to us specifically.
Mr. Wooton, now is the time for public comment. Public comment is where you all address the court and the court listens. That's not the appropriate time for the members of the fiscal court to discuss this issue. So, and we're not yet in the regular meeting of the fiscal court yet.
I'll say one more thing and I'll let you all get on with your agenda. Something my dad brought up that I'll speak for him. We've got fertilizer trucks, you know, chemical deliveries. These folks don't even know about these little bitty go-karts. And, you know, they're probably talking to their bosses about their next delivery or this or that, you know, they're on a farm driveway. Ain't no reason they shouldn't be on their phone. They're off the public road. So, you know, there's a lot of, lot of things to consider, you know, and it's, it's a matter of time. And for a tourist to pay $50 or whatever it is for a ticket and to get seriously injured or not even make it back, that seems pretty cheap for one's life. That's all. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to seek to address the fiscal court and public comment? Going once? Going twice? Going a third time? And that will close the portion of public comment. The agenda item for which that we as a court sought to meet was about the executive session
I'll call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order.
item of potential litigation. But we are past the 5:30 mark, so we are going to adjourn the meeting of the committee
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
of the whole and take a brief recess to make sure that we are going into our regular meeting
Squire Taylor?
Here.
of the fiscal court as far as our live stream goes.
Squire Gentry?
Here.
Squire Varner?
So we are adjourned as a committee of the whole in our special meeting, and we have
Here.
Squire Carle?
Here.
Squire Downey?
a brief recess.
Here.
Squire Blackford?
Here.
Squire Gill?
Squire Brown?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Offering our invocation tonight is Mr. Zach Carmichael from Journey Church, who's a youth pastor. You mind to turn on your mic, please, sir?
Let us pray. God, just really grateful for these men and women who serve our community. God, while I don't know all of them personally, I just see them out and about constantly and consistently, and I'm just grateful for how they care about our community, God. I just want to pray a blessing on their families, pray for protection for their families. And also, God, I just want to pray encouragement for them. I think anytime you serve people, anytime you're in leadership, there's often a lot of discouragement. And God, I just pray tonight as they leave this place, they would be encouraged that you're using them to better our community. God, I pray for their meeting tonight. I pray for just the conversations that will take place. I pray that they would honor you. I pray for the decisions that will happen tonight, that they would be things that honor you and that are aligning with the values that you teach us in your word, God. Thankful for this community. I pray that your hand will continue to be on it and that you bless this time that they have together. In Jesus's name, amen.
Your eyes for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We had a round of public comment that was related to the rail explorers, and there was no, no one additional seeking any public... There was no one additional seeking public comments, so we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, the special meeting of June 25th, 2024, and the regular meeting of June 25th. Are there any comments regarding any of those minutes? Any edits, corrections? Seeing none? Are there any objections to saying? Also seeing none? We will approve the minutes without objection. Committee reports, the road committee met to take up the possibility of a four-way stop sign on Huntertown Road at Hunter's Ridge and Woodburn Hall. That was brought to the court's attention by Squire Larry Blackford. We reviewed the UK traffic study, and we discussed the safety concerns and issues on that stretch of Huntertown Road, which is a county road. I will turn to that discussion, Squire Blackford, so that we can bring some sort of direction to our next steps as a court as it relates to this safety issue on Huntertown Road. What would you like to see the committee or the court do, Squire Blackford?
I'd like for the road, road committee to proceed on with the information they gave them today, the, the concerns of the safety of parents and kids entering the school over there and all the traffic that, that Huntertown Road is going to be increased with the new bypass going through my south, going through back at Evans Cross. And just for the safety of that area of parents, and considering, I've been concerned about the safety on the Huntertown Highway for quite a while, you know. And if another step need be done, so be it, but I still think my concern is the safety of the kids and the parents and those on Huntertown Road traveling, would get in, would make it safer over there when they travel. Like I said, we have two schools over there, two churches and 10 subdivisions that enter and exit from Huntertown, Hunter Road, Hunter Town Road constantly. So I just think it's something we need to look forward down the road and get in front of it because it's not going to get any, any better. And I don't think that people are going to slow down anymore. That's, that's where I feel about it, you know, so...
Thank you, Squire Blackford. So we will put this on the docket for the road committee to meet prior to our next meeting, review the information and, and work on a plan forward for the safety of that area of Huntertown Road. That be satisfactory?
Yes.
Thank you. No, no, you're good, Squire Blackford. Thank you. Moving on to the committee of the whole. The committee of the whole was scheduled as a special meeting to meet in executive session and closed session on potential litigation items. We were presented with the neighbors of the Milner and Tyrone Pike area about issues related to rail explorers. The, the committee of the whole, the full fiscal court, voted to suspend the rules to allow public comment related to the, specifically to the rail explorers' public comments, and those were admitted in court. So that was the sum of that meeting. We were not able to meet in executive session upon litigation. I will note that one of the individuals requested that the members of the fiscal court discuss this. Again, our aim was to discuss that in executive session. I'll have a conversation with the county attorney whether it's appropriate for us to continue that executive session later on in this meeting, but I do think it's important that we continue our conduct of business. That was the sum of the committee of the whole. We will make sure those records are preserved and that the, and that all information given is on the OneDrive shared with the fiscal court regarding concerns for the rail explorers. That's the sum of our committee reports. We'll move on to the reports of the treasurer. Madam Treasurer?
I don't have a report tonight. We're still working on year end, and I will have the fourth quarter financials to you for the next meeting.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. I'd like to next ask Director Chandler for emergency management for his items.
Judge, we had an out-of-state travel request for a budgeted in-service training. That one is pretty important. Deputy Crabtree will be receiving a certification from the International Association of Emergency Managers on that trip. So at a minimum, I'd like permission from him to go, but I'd like to go and get some continuing education myself.
Is there a motion to approve the out-of-state travel request for Director Chandler and Deputy Crabtree?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Gill. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries.
Judge, we also received yesterday an amended contract that had been previously approved by the court from the Kentucky Office of Homeland Security. They awarded us with some homeland security grant funds to put on a Train the Trainer course, which was hosted at KCTCS earlier in the spring. That course came in way under budget, and they have generously amended the scope of work and extended the period of performance that would allow us to buy new resource for all of county government use. So I would request permission, one, to allow Judge Kay to sign this new revised agreement, and, two, for permission to go to advertise bid once that agreement is fully executed.
Is there a motion to approve the amended contract between the fiscal court, the Commonwealth of Kentucky, Office of Homeland Security, to change the fiscal year 22 homeland security grant's scope of work to include purchases of equipment and to authorize the signature, authorize the execution of all documents related thereto? Motion by Squire Blackford, second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions for Director Chandler? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. The next item of general orders and unfinished business, we have a board appointment. There was some confusion about Squire, former Squire C.L. Watts's appointment to the Woodford County Fire Protection District for a term set to expire June 30, 2027. It was incorrectly adopted in our records that, that term expired next year, but we were informed by the fire district that the term expired July 30, 2024, excuse me, June 30, 2024. And so we entertained a email vote to approve the appointment of C.L. Watts to the Woodford County Fire Protection District for a term set to expire June 30, 2027 for a three-year term. I need a motion to ratify that. Motion by Squire Gentry?
Second.
Second, Squire Downey. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries. We need a motion to begin the bid process and advertising upon the execution of the contract for the KOHS amended contract. Is there a motion to begin the bid process and advertising upon execution of said contract?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Taylor, second by Squire Gentry. Are there any questions? I'm just returning to the item in Director Chandler's report, the KOHS amended contract. So we've approved that. Now we need to approve the advertising and bid for same. That's the motion on the table. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. The claims, the bills to be paid by this county are before you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Are there any objections to saying? Seeing no objections, the bills will be paid without objection. We need to ratify the June 26, 2024 email approval of transfers. Is there a motion for same?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Varner, second by Squire Carle. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. The next item is the personnel order. Is there a motion to approve same?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions about our personnel order? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. The next item, the memorandum of agreement for the food pantry is still being worked on between the cities and the county. As, by way of update, the food pantry is looking at hiring an executive director in October, so there is still some time on that. But we do want to get the final agreements between the cities and the county prepared for the food pantry executive director. We'll move forward with that. Today, I distributed to you the draft of the resolution for the young and new farmer program. You have that for your review, and there will be no action taken, but I would note that we do also need to create a criteria and a application to go along with that, something that we are working on. Specifically for the resolution, I would recommend that we invite farmers in the community, those in the agriculture community, to help us in looking at these applications. And I'm going to recommend, if we do pass the resolution, that we would ask Robert Richardson, Vernon Leach, and Lynn Pruitt, and Bo Neal, our ag extension agent, to be a screening committee for that grant program. That grant program would look for, to be $2,000 per young or new farmer, and it would be for the total allocation in the amount of $50,000, which was the budgeted amount for this grant program for this fiscal year. But we're not taking up the program, and I give you two weeks to look at that. And I welcome any questions or input thereon. We do have Huntertown Road four-way stop as old business. I believe, Squire Blackford, that the resolution is that we will put that on the road committee for next time to look at ways to proceed with that issue. I also have before you several GIS agreements that are for your review. We have the, the contract between the fiscal court and the Woodford County PVA for GIS services, the contract for the fiscal court, the planning commission, and the cities, also the 911 GIS draft contract, and the fiscal court license agreement. A lot of that you all received today, so I will give you an additional two weeks to review that, and then it'll obviously go to those specific entities to approve. Just as, by way of clarification, the GIS department has moved under the county, and we are basically taking up routine agreements and business to solidify that move. Are there any questions on any of that? Seeing none? The next item is related to the Resolution 2024-11 regarding medical cannabis. Mr. County Attorney, may I turn it over to you, sir?
Yes, Judge. Based on the... Based on the discussion at the last meeting, I prepared a proposed resolution authorizing a referendum for those voters in Woodford County who live, and solely for them, for those who live outside the corporate limits for the cities of Bursells and Midway. It's a simple yes-no referendum, whether or not they wish to allow for medical cannabis business operations in the unincorporated areas of Woodford County. The language is lifted straight from the statute. If you adopt the resolution, it is to be submitted to our county clerk, and this will be a ballot issue at the general election in November. And it will simply read, "Are you in favor of the sale of medicinal cannabis at a licensed dispensary and the operation of other cannabis businesses in Woodford County?" And it would be a simple yes-no vote. And then if it is no, then this matter cannot be readdressed again for at least three years. If it's yes, then it can go forward. There are still hurdles that have to be crossed over before anything could actually happen, but as I understood the court, there was going to be some fault tonight to letting the voters out in the county decide this issue. I do want to make one note, and this came from a good inquiry I received from Squire Downey. This would relate not just to potentially dispensaries out in the county, but to all related business operations, the grow operations, which are typically more county than the dispensaries, which are more city operations. So it's up to the court. You either, you either adopt your own regulations, you can adopt a resolution disallowing it, or you can put it up for a vote for your constituents. And that's up to you as a body.
So it is before the court now how to proceed on the issue of medical cannabis as, as it relates to the state statutes adopted in this past General Assembly? Mr. County Attorney, sir?
If I can make one other point, if you are to consider the, the referendum, the one good thing about it is that it's at a general election already scheduled. You will not incur any additional cost, obviously, to have this election. It is likely to be a heavy turnout because it's a presidential election, so you will get a better feel for what the county residents actually, what their position actually is in this regard. So it will not inconvenience, Ms. Nash, it will inconvenience us on election night because we'll be there longer, Ms. Nash, but it will, it will, it will not inconvenience the court in terms of the cost or the public. If they're going to turn out, they're probably going to turn out this November, so that's just a, for your consideration. From a timing standpoint, it does work out well.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion of the, this issue. Squire Taylor, you're recognized.
You know, I, I believe it's the, I guess, the most basic form of democracy to let folks choose, and I think that's a very reasonable approach. I am disappointed in the, in the, I guess, the General Assembly's language that seems to be very biased in suggesting that it's a dispensary and not these cultivators or processors or producers and all that I think would have an agricultural impact on our community in a different way and would be more...
It is likely to be a heavy turnout because it's a presidential election, so you will get a better feel for what the county residents actually, what their position actually is in this regard. So it will not inconvenience, it will inconvenience us on election night because we'll be there longer, Ms. Nash, but it will, it will not inconvenience the court in terms of the cost or the public. If they're going to turn out, they're probably going to turn out this November. So that's just for your consideration. From a timing standpoint, it does work out well.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. I'd like to open up the floor for any discussion of this issue. Squire Taylor, you're recognized.
You know, I believe it's the, I guess, the most basic form of democracy to let folks choose, and I think that's a very reasonable approach. I am disappointed in the, I guess, the General Assembly's language that seems to be very biased in suggesting that it's a dispensary and not these cultivators, or processors, or producers and all that I think would have an agricultural impact on our community in a different way and would be more pertinent to the county residents and county businesses. But we play the hand we're dealt in this world, and so I do think that that's, but I am worried about that confusion and what that might provide because it does seem to suggest predominantly dispensaries, and that's a whole lottery system that may not even be a reality, even potentially in Woodford County. But the idea for the opportunities for the agricultural side is a little discouraging and disappointing.
Squire Gill.
Thank you. I think absolutely the voters should decide this.
Other comments? Squire Gentry?
Let the people vote.
Squire Blackford, sir?
Let them vote also for medical use, if they use this as marijuana, just for recreation use, so yes, let them vote.
Is there a motion to adopt the Resolution 2024-11?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Gentry, second by Squire Brown. That 2024-11 authorizes a referendum on, to determine whether cannabis, medical cannabis business operations may occur in Woodford County in the non-incorporated areas. There is a motion to adopt the resolution, which you've had before you. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adoption of the Resolution 2024-11, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Judge, I do now see our madam clerk back there, so this will need to be delivered to her office so that she has as much lead time as possible to make sure this is on the ballot for Woodford County voters.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney, and I appreciate that segue because I would like to call up the Woodford County Clerk, Mrs. Sandy Jones, for a report. If you don't mind, turn on the mic. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
No, it's a resolution.
I'm coming before you this evening to make a request for election funding. Yesterday, I submitted a voting plan for the 2024 general election that was voted on unanimously by our county board of elections last week. These plans require very detailed descriptions that report every part of an election, which includes every part of the equipment that will be needed to administer an election. As you know, we have four voting centers that have worked better than anyone could have ever anticipated when a voting center became a necessity in 2020. And the last three elections, I had to testify before the state board of elections to give clear evidence why our county is more than adequately served with four voting centers with no need to diminish the efficiency and integrity of our election by adding a fifth voting center on Lexington Road. The plan that was voted on by the county board of elections was submitted, and it was asked to leave our county's plan with the four voting centers, but add five additional check-in stations, which is comparable to adding a fifth voting center. This compromise of adding five check-in stations will require election equipment. This present plan will require all the voting machines and scanners, leaving no spares. We always hope we never have to use a spare, but we have to have one. Also, we will be short 20 voting booths. So the cost of one scanner and 20 voting booths would cost a total of $10,620. The scanner cost is $6,620, and the booths are $4,000, which includes the shipping cost. Received this quote today from HARP Enterprises, but I plan to price it out to another company to see if I can get the voting booths just a little bit cheaper. So I'm asking tonight for the $10,620 or less, if I may.
Is there a motion to approve the request of the county clerk regarding election equipment?
Motion.
Motion by Squire Brown, second by Squire Barner. Is there any discussion or questions about this additional expense? Squire Downey, you're recognized.
Thank you. Can you verify just the check-in stations, what that is at the location? And would this be solely at the one facility? This would be check-in stations at all of the facilities?
All throughout. So when I say check-in stations, that's where you come in with the e-poll book. So you're going to have an additional station over at Falling Springs. If you went to Falling Springs to vote, you'll remember that we had the Alcove here at the theater, we used that, and we were commended all during the election because people with mobility issues were able to just come straight through the door. So we'll have that one added. We're going to have one added over in Midway, so we'll have four check-in stations there. We'll have an extra one at Nunsuch and at Millville, just because we do anticipate there to be a heavy turnout, and we want to be able to move people in and out. Right now, we've got about a 45-second to one minute from the time you come in and show your license, you receive your ballot, and then go back to the booth. So we have to make sure we have plenty of booth space. So we're trying to anticipate and plan all the obstacles that may come our way, but we'll have five.
Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Other questions or comments for the county clerk? Seeing none, the motion has passed unanimously. You're good to go. Anything else additional for the court?
That's all I have.
Then you're more than welcome to be excused.
Thank you.
Thanks for waiting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we didn't vote. All those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Threw me off with that comment, Squire Downey. Thank you.
Keep him on his toes.
All right, Mr. County Attorney, we have an opiate settlement update. I will recognize you for that.
Judge, I'll say what I can without us having to go into executive session on this. I received an email Wednesday, July 3. Always good to receive an action email the day before holiday, and they needed a response by today, July 9. So this is the first opportunity to talk to the court. But it really doesn't require action on your part unless you chose not to do this, and I can't imagine that you would. Litigation currently is contemplating adding additional defendants in an attempt to seek settlements or verdicts in the event it has to go to trial as against them for opioid monies. And if you did not wish to do that, I have to inform them, I guess, before I leave here tonight. I can't imagine that you would not wish to pursue any and all defendants who maybe should be held accountable for this. So I have not indicated to our consortium of attorneys that we are not interested in that, and unless you all direct me otherwise, I'm just going to let the clock strike midnight tonight, and we will be able to amend our motions.
Is there any, are there any comments, questions, or objections to the county attorney's position? Seeing none.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
The other matter related to, we had talked about the Kroger situation. Currently, there are 33 states eligible for a settlement with Kroger. Two states have already settled, actually, New Mexico and West Virginia. Three states who currently have not opted in are Alaska, Florida, and Kentucky. Now, the deadline is August the 12th, so Kentucky still could opt in. Basically, we need to be prepared to say, you as Woodford County government are willing to opt in, which I would hope you would be. We've had great success in getting these cases resolved without trial, and this would be an opportunity to settle with Kroger. So unless, again, I'm hearing from the court, you don't wish to opt in to a potential settlement with Kroger, I am taking the position on your behalf that you do wish. Assuming the state follows suit, they want to make sure that they're prepared to act on our behalf by virtue of me getting word to them, yes, we do wish to opt in. So unless I hear otherwise, a motion from the court directing me not to take that position, that will be the position I take.
Are there any questions or comments related to the county attorney's briefing on that piece of the opiate settlement funds? Open up the floor for any motions thereon or any objections thereto?
Just be objections.
Seeing no objections, Mr. County Attorney, we'll move on to new business.
Thank you, I will take that position on your behalf.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. We appreciate your diligent work on that.
Thank you, Judge.
I would like to return once again to reports and call on Director Chandler to give us a timely update on some impending potential severe weather.
Judge, I just wanted to bring to the courts and the community's attention, both in the room and who might be tuned in right now, Woodford County is under a tornado watch. We don't get hurricanes in Kentucky, but we get the remnants of hurricanes. Tonight is one of those unusual nights where we're seeing weather come out of the south. There's an active tornado warning in Meade, Bullitt, Hardin County right now, so just take it seriously like you always do.
Yes, thank you, Director Chandler. I appreciate that update.
Judge, could I ask Director Chandler?
Yes.
Do you have a time for all this since we're sitting here in the dark and I don't know what's out there and I'm worried so?
The tornado watch is effective through midnight, but that includes most of the Louisville warning offices area, so a little before that for us, most of the risk should pass.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to new business. Does any other department or agency have anything to address the court before we move on to our new business? Seeing none, our new business, the treasurer is working on the first reading of a budget amendment number one. That'll be ordinance 2024-5, and it should be ready for you prior to your 7/23 meeting. Item B is related to the contract with Mercer County, the potential contract with them about housing inmates from Mercer County. I have a, the county attorney has reviewed the latest version of that, and it is circulated for your review and action on the 7/23 court agenda. Yeah, Mr., excuse me, Squire Downey.
Just a question, Mr. County Attorney, if that was in the memorandum, if it specified sentenced inmates?
Does it specify?
That they would be transferring any, all inmates that have been sentenced, or any, is it just any that are eligible based on the criteria?
It did not distinguish being held in advance of failing to make bond or serving a sentence determined. So it could be any, so yeah, it'd probably be both.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Squire Downey.
That's a good question.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. That is for your review and action at our next fiscal court meeting.
And Judge, one last thing.
And that is why it's an important distinction. That's why I changed, they had used the word, and the judge, to his credit, said inmates rather than prisoners, prisoners once they've been sentenced and serving out. So that's why we're using the word inmates.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. We do have the acceptance of the sheriff's quarterly report for the second quarter. Is there a motion to adopt same? Motion, Ms. Squire Brown, second, Ms. Squire Gill. Are there any questions for the sheriff? We appreciate all you're doing. Sheriff Will Hoyt, thank you so much. Seeing no questions, no further discussion. All those in favor of accepting the sheriff's quarterly report, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We do have the training incentives for myself, Magistrate Gentry, and Jailer Michelle Rankin for calendar year 2024 pursuant to the statute, Kara 64.5275, subsection 6. Is there a motion to approve said training incentive payments for same? Motion by Squire Carl, second by Squire Taylor. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. We're going to, before we move to announcements, we'll move into a brief recess to discuss whether or not we're going to move into executive session for any reason.
We are in recess.
How long a recess?
Five minutes.
All right.
Think we're going to get it, and it's like three minutes and quits.